I started it when you're ready.
I'd like to call the Board of Finance meeting on May 18th, 2023 to order, 7:00 PM. Welcome, everyone. First of all, is our normally seating of alternates, I think we can suspend that tonight. Yeah, all six here on the regular spots. And next, two sets of minutes for approval, March 9th and March 16th. Do I have a motion to?
So move, move from March 9th.
Okay, let's do March 9th first. Thanks, Pete. Second?
My second.
Thanks. Discussion, questions? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Any abstentions? Okay. One abstention, March 16th.
I will be accepted this March 16th, 2023.
Second? Keep it simple. Questions, adjustments, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions?
I'm staying, I wasn't there. That's all you got?
Yes, let's do presence to speak.
Okay, more? Are there more of these?
Yes, there are two more.
They still have to get recruited?
Well, one of the, uh, that is, uh.
All right.
Is there anyone present to speak? Wow, Nick raises his hand. Um, Nick?
Hey, Nick Tell, 49 Myrtle. Um, so my understanding is that the Board of Finance through the town of, uh, town meeting had given the money to the SBC, um, if that stands to be correct, uh, the money that that money was, the use for that money was for a new school. Not sure if Board of Finance can request that money back since it has no longer, uh, no any, does not have any purpose to be with the SBC going further. Thank you.
Any other ones who are present to speak in the crowd here or online? It looks like it's springtime attendance to me. Okay. Um, well, Chairman's report, I'm, uh, I mean, I'm gonna just clarify that, that the million dollars that we are, uh, you know, that we plan to take, uh, take from the fund balance to apply to the CIP, uh, plan is, was specifically moved and passed unanimously by all the boards, uh, since, starting with CIP, to, to earmark for the school, for the use of the school's facilities. It does not, it does not, uh, say that all the money is going to the SBC or to a new school. It's, it's, it was acknowledging, and the Board of Finance had this discussion when we approved it, that there's going to be an ongoing need for the school's facilities because they are 100 years old and 70, 70, excuse me, and 70 years old, or whether it was a new school, that there was going to be a clear and present need for some expensive repairs or for building project either way, and that this was an effort to soften the blow of, of, of a mill increase in the, in, if we, you know, given that we expect that we'll need to do some kind of bonding or some kind of spending that's at a large, at a gargantuan level, and we were trying to soften that blow. Christina, do you have any clarification on that?
No, I think you did a good job explaining.
Okay. I know, uh, I'm starting to do a chairman's report.
Okay.
To kinda, I know.
I, I just wanted to clarify what I, what I think his question is. I don't think he was questioning the million dollars. I think he was questioning the second hundred thousand that was passed at town meeting.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought I was talking about.
That's why I, I, I started to interrupt you.
We always interrupt these.
I know, so I just. Sometimes I actually know what I'm talking about.
Okay, but I'm not like engaging in a, in a direct thing, I'm just explaining what the million dollars is. As far as the SBC money, um, I'm, I'm not gonna go blow by blow on that, but that is something that is in the CIP plan, it's, um, Jim, I don't know if you've got, if you have any, that inside as you represent, yeah, if you could, yeah, why don't we wait till the update? The other things I wanted to mention, and Donna is going to, uh, go into this and just, just in some degree about the financials, but just the, the things that have broken since, uh, the April 4th budget hearing and, and since the budget was passed in May, uh, have been all in our favor pretty much. Would you say that's an over, overarching observation? And, uh, even if we do not, you know, my expectation is that we will not need to tap the, the, uh, the fund balance further than we're already tapping up with the, with the million dollar idea, but it still puts the fund balance actually even better because of what would have been at 10% of, uh, you know, in that, in that mid-spot, right between our sort of expectation of it being eight, between eight and 12% of, um, of the, uh, operating, of, of the operating budgets or of the spending. We, it's, it's now, it would be, it would be at 11.2%, so it's even, um, at a larger level than that. But the idea is that, um, we are gonna need to see some facility spending. Um, I think that's one of the things that we arrived at in this, uh, you know, complicated process of looking at the future of the schools, and so, any way you cut it, we're thinking that it's, it doesn't make sense to artificially reduce, um, the mill levy, you know, in one, in any given year, because, um, it's just gonna be extra painful as these things amp up, and I think you guys may have already been aware, but there are towns around us that are going up three to five mill increases this year, or discussing it and do it, and doing it. I think Bolton is, Dafford is, um, uh, you know, it's, it's kind of all around us as people sort of find their way out of the pandemic and figure out their spending. I think we're really well situated the way we are, um, right now. So I did wanna mention that, and, um, Donna, why don't you give us a little more specifics on, uh, the financial reports that you did for us?
Yes, so I'm starting with the April 30th financial report, and you'll see that on the revenue side, there are four of the categories that have exceeded their, their budget as of April 30th, and tax collections will, um, by June 30th exceed the budget, that's the expectation. On the expenditure side of the budget, there is one department that is overspent as of April 30th. That department is the unemployment department, and as you know, the statute for the Board of Finance is that a department cannot exceed their budget. So the budget for unemployment was a thousand dollars, there was a claim for $1,130. So you'll see later in the agenda, there'll be a transfer request for $130 to clear that up. Otherwise, the expenditures are, are, um, they're doing well. Some, many departments will be underspent on the expenditure side. So that leads me to the forecast, and the forecast memo shows, I'm on the revenue side, I'm forecasting over budget about $600,000 on the revenue. On the expenditure side, we have a commitment from the Board of Ed to return 125,000. I know that, that there are going to be some requests for end of year spending coming before the Board of Finance, so for now, I'm forecasting all the money to be spent on, on the expenditure side, except for the money coming back from the Board of Ed. So with the 600,000 extra in revenue and the 100,000 under spent by Board of Ed, we're looking at an excess of about $700,000. We planned by design to, to take 490,000 from our fund balance. We will not need to do that since we are $700,000 to be good. So after you put that money back, we'll have a forecasted change in fund balance of 230,000. So to get to the ending fund balance, the beginning fund balance was 2.5 million. Add back the 490,000 that we didn't need to pull from fund balance because our revenues were favorable. Add the change in fund balance, 200,000. The forecast for the general fund balance on June 30th, 2023 is $3.2 million.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So that as a percent of the budget expenditure appropriation is 16.1. So that's the, how you measure your policy between eight and 12% is against your expenditure appropriation, and for FY '24, it's 20,454,660,000. So that is your, um, information for, um, considering how much of the fund balance you want to afford, and where I think that you will end the year.
Thank you. I was gonna ask you, you know, with that little, what is it, $130 that, that we were overspent? That any budget was overspent?
Yes.
Which is, you know, tiny, what?
Yes.
It, what is it normally? Is, is there very much, is there some, have there been some times where we've been?
There's normally, um, no claims for unemployment.
No, I mean, uh, as far as cost centers that have overspent, that overspend their line.
And, okay, keep asking the question, like, by how much over do we see?
No, I'm just wondering, since it's like 130 over and it's for a, you know, a straight claim, what is the overspending in budgets in general? What is the performance? Is it always flat? Does everyone always make, in other words, does everyone always make their budget?
Um, they try, but sometimes things come up and they go over.
And it's usually absorbed by other underspending?
Yes, especially in a large budget where there's, happens to be in this, on a larger budget, there's only one line item. But the more line items you have in the budget, and the bigger the budget, the more wiggle room you have to, to, um, work around flying items.
Thank you. Right. Any questions for Donna? Um, you can see on that, on the, uh, that one, uh, with the budget calculator on it, that this one that looks like this only might be in color. The figures that she gave in terms of, of the forecasted fund balance and the percentage of the fiscal year '24, uh, spending budget, you can see the percentages and stuff in that chart right at the bottom, if you guys wanted to look at that. Uh, then that shows what we would be after we, uh, transferred the million dollars. So. Let's see. Do you have it? You have to give it back, though. Okay, I'm gonna move on. Um. See, it, uh, Christina, would you like to give us an update on where we are with ARPA?
We were, the last, I think, three meetings, so we are, uh, we, we were meeting all last year on the first and third Mondays of every month, and we are now at a point where we've been canceling meetings because we are waiting for some of the bigger projects to close so that we have the funds available to appropriate them, reappropriate them for, for other things. And, and as of last week, we canceled because there, um, we're just not at that point. It's closed, right? Right, Donna, we, we know that there is gonna be money, it's just the invoices haven't been in or, um, some of the things haven't been delivered yet, so we can't pay for them yet, things like that. So, um, hopefully, we're gonna try again on, uh, June 7th.
Yeah, Lindsay, see where we're at? I wanted to ask you, uh, because I know you've talked, I know this has been on your mind, uh, what kind of follow-up on the people who have had, whatever you call it, grants or money from ARPA to see the results?
Well, that's, we really haven't done any sort of formal audit of how the funds have been spent down. When we close a project, Donna gives us, like, the, the, the printout of what the things were, oh, you know, spent on. And we review them, but, um, one of the things is the BRIG program, where people were given those people, businesses or some, or nonprofits, those grants that they requested. I don't, I, I think we, we are gonna need to review those as well, probably, we, we should, make sure that, that money is being spent in the way that it was asked for, but, um.
Those are 15K each, pretty much?
I think some of them weren't that much, it was however much they asked for, and so, but I don't know if they were all exactly 15, but, yeah.
I, if I, if I could, they were, yeah, those, um, were between, uh, I believe most of them were between five and 15, the majority were 15,000, um, but there were, um, I can think off the top of my head at least one that was, uh, 5,000, but, but the majority of them were the $15,000 maximum.
Thank you.
I think working with, um, EDC, um, to, to maybe have some of those folks come in and share with us how they've spent those dollars, would not make a bad idea of the ARPA side, I know I, I expressed that to Christina.
Yeah. Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, Jim? Lynn? Give us an update on the EDC.
Not a whole heck of a lot to update about, to be honest with you. We are meeting last night, was canceled, as was one two weeks ago, um, pending further direction from the Board of Ed. So as of, meeting a little over a month ago, three meetings ago, um, we closed out some of the subcommittees on the board, the finance subcommittee and the land use subcommittee, that their report was finished, closed up, and voted to make a request to the Board of Ed for direction on how to proceed with, or given the referendum. So my understanding is that's being targeted from May 24th at 6:30, a joint meeting of the Board of Ed, Board of Selectmen and the School Building Committee. Um, I don't think, an agenda I haven't seen yet or hasn't been posted, but, um, so this, by way of, I know we had some, um, that's what I'm looking for, encumbered expenditures that were still outstanding. I think the last balance we have is around 52,000, um, of unspent funds out of the 200,000 that, in total, that hasn't approved for SBC use. I don't have a final number, I apologize for that, but we'll have more clarity as the, whenever the next meetings are, and as cutting work goes.
Thank you. Questions, Jim?
Yeah, procedural question, is, is the SBC a, a advisory committee of the Board of Selectmen? Or was it an advisory committee of the Board of Education or Board of Ed?
Okay. Um.
Formed by, yes, by the Board of Selectmen, I believe, but it's.
Yeah, that, yeah, I, that's why I was, it was formed by the Board of Selectmen, I, that's why I asked the question, I didn't know.
Didn't know.
Anyone else? Okay.
Oh, one more, was your, your subcommittee on finance dissolved? Yes. All right, so we're spending the encumbered funds, and, and I don't think it's the purview of this committee to ask you for that money back, I think it's the purview of the School Building Committee to send it back at the direction of, probably, the, the Board of Ed, because you, you're advising them.
That's a question I don't have an answer to.
I don't either, that's why I asked you.
But it's a good one, and I'll follow up on it, thank you.
Okay. Um, on to new business, let's set the mill rate. I'll move to set the mill rate for fiscal year '24 at 32.16 mills, which is an increase of 0.89 of a mill over the fiscal year '23 mill rate of 31.27.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Pete. Discussion? I like it. What?
I like it.
Oh, good, you know, positive discussion is, is welcome. Anyone else? Okay, take a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions? Done. Thank you all. Um, Phil, uh, Phil's here to talk to us about the center and hall school sidewalk repairs that are in all budgets and lined up, um, so take it away, Phil.
Yep, so this is in, uh, CIP funds, and it is in an account where it has to go to town meeting. So the Board of Ed has already approved what they're looking for, it's come to you now, and then it's gotta go to town meeting to get the money. The good news for you is this is under budget, uh, this does have to be approved as two separate items because it's seen as two separate items in your CIP plan. So the CIA, uh, the CES sidewalk, um, we had budgeted 12,000, and the Board of Ed is requesting 11,250, based upon bids, and then HMS sidewalk was budgeted at 41,000, and it came in at 34,850. A local contractor was the person that, um, we're hoping to work that bid to, obviously, once there's a fund approved, um, which is great, and it's basically crack repair, total replacement, it depends on the section, where it is and what it is. So that's the gist of it, uh, it's about $7,000 under budget, which is, which is good.
Great. Um. Did you, so, did you say, did you briefly say which sidewalks at each school it kind of is, is it?
Oh, yeah, they walked, so the, the vendors walked, um, what we were looking for, and they identified it. And honestly, some of those things just change, if there's a new crack, they built it into their price, and it's apples for apples. It's hard to find concrete folks that wanna do, uh, $10,000 jobs.
Right.
Because they all wanna do $200,000 jobs, plus.
Don't we all?
Yeah, absolutely, right?
It's a lot of prep for a little, for a little job, yeah.
It is, and so, uh, actually, the local contractor that came in, it's, it's obviously their business, but the second quote was doubled. So, I mean, it was significantly different.
How many did you get? Two?
So it depends on what the pricing comes in, we're supposed to have three. We got quotes that people didn't do the work, like they wanted to shave it instead of changing it, and that wasn't, the Board of Ed just wasn't looking for that, so this is one of those areas, and I said, getting someone to come and do concrete work is very, very hard.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, I will move to, uh, the, the, what to recommend to the Board of Selectmen to call a town meeting to appropriate up to $11,250 from the Capital Reserve Fund to the Center School Sidewalk Repair slash Replacement Project. Is there a second?
Is that the suggested motion, and is it in our packet?
Oh, I got it, we got a second before we can discuss, I'll second it.
Yeah, it's not in the packet.
It's not in the packet.
Yeah. Thank you, Jim. Um. Okay, is there any discussion?
That was, which, which sidewalk was?
That's the, I'm sorry, that's the Center School.
All right.
That's the first one you, that Phil mentioned. No discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? So. Um, the second motion is on the Hall School ones. Move, I move that the Board of Selectmen or recommend to the Board of Selectmen to call a town meeting to appropriate up to 34,850 from the Capital Reserve Fund to the Hall Memorial School Sidewalk Repair slash Replacement Project.
Second.
Thanks, Pete. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? That's a six oh vote, too, Sam.
He wants some other quick good news, long.
Sure.
The fire panels, which don't have to go to town meeting, came in $35,000 underwriting.
Oh.
Huge, yeah, because everybody was at the max, except for one, um, and they can do the job. So that project is happening, will be happening in the summer, um, so between the two, it was a $35,000 savings, which is great. And then Donna mentioned the 125, it's coming back, we're, we're returning 275 to you, that's our number, with the expectation that 150, we're gonna ask back from our lousing, that's an offset in the budget, and the 125 is wherever you send, so just always reminding you of that 150, that we offset our budget with 150, so.
Phil?
Yeah.
I got a question that's slightly off topic here. Were the, were the pillars out in front of Hall School over fixed?
Yes.
Thank you, I, I just, I just never got the follow-up on that.
When was that done, actually? Because I remember one time it was put off.
It was last summer.
Last summer.
It was last summer.
So I think it was, what, three years ago that we first approved the money for, or something?
Yeah, and then, and then it got put off, one, you know, yeah.
Last summer.
Budget cuts, and then, right. But that whole, that whole facade area was done, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
From the side, it was, Trump crossed the border.
Thank you. Sam, by the way, I can give you these motions, if you. Um. Okay. So. Um, Kathy DeMares is here to speak to us about preliminary work on a parcel that the Conservation Commission's interested in.
Yeah, I'm pretty, yeah, everybody, I thought it'd be easier, uh, just give you a map of the potential open space property that we've been looking into, and, um, whoops. So the pink, um, quarter that you see is town property, and, uh, most of that is Spent Movie Park. That Movie Park is about 303 acres right now, and the yellow parcel that you see is the property of interest, is 7.28 acres, it's in the eastern side of, um, the town, and borders the Ashford boundary. It's bounded by unmaintained portions from the road, as well as Amagon Road. It's bounded by unmaintained portions from the road as well as Amagon Road. Both of those roads lead into Ashford. A portion of Burma Road that extends into Ashford leads into Lustig Road. And that portion of Lustig Road in Ashford is also unmaintained at this time. So this parcel has a lot of difficulty being accessed. The property owner is interested in offering this to the town to be added on to the park. This was a property she purchased in nineteen ninety-eight with her husband, who passed away. The property had a lot of meaning to them. They would go out and spend time. It's, it's a forested parcel that has an old camp on it that's deteriorating right now. Has a nice pond on it, great wildlife habitat. But it had a lot of meaning to her and her husband and she would like to see it added to the property possible. So she understands that the town has limited financial resources and will be willing to consider an offer under market value. Well, let me tell you a little bit more about this property. The camp-like structure that's on there is sitting on a stone foundation. It's about two hundred square feet in size. It's in very poor condition. It would have to be removed if the town purchased the property. There's a small amount of junk along the border with Amagon Road that probably was thrown there by people, other people in the past because people, you know, just go out and dump where nobody's around. We don't believe that there's anything hazardous there. Appears to be old metal, maybe a tire or two. Uh, there is a shallow well on the property with a cement cover that would have to be filled in again if the town purchased it, just for safety. The pond is about, is less than two acres in size. It does have an earthen dam that appears to be in good shape, but we would want the town engineer to inspect it. And it already has an A two level survey that was done in nineteen ninety-eight by Gardner and Peterson. And so it doesn't appear that we really need to update that. It's a pretty solid survey. Currently, the Tax Assessor's Office has this appraised at nineteen thousand six hundred and twenty dollars. It's assessed at two thousand dollars, excuse me, two thousand four hundred and fifty dollars. And that's a low assessment because it's actually an open space. So it has, it's taxed at a much lower value. It's a vacant lot. And it's over the amount that's required for open space. So she's been able to keep it in, in that category since she's owned it. Some other associated costs that we've considered is to get the dam inspection done by the town engineer would cost three hundred and fifty dollars. And last night, we voted out our needing to use our current fiscal year budget to pay for that. Carl will be going out on the twenty-ninth to do the assessment and anticipates having a report after us in a, in a week. We've gone out and just got some cost proposals for market value appraisal and they come in between seventeen hundred and two thousand dollars. If we were to move forward on purchase like this, we anticipate the legal expenses would be approximately four thousand dollars, which would include things like the sales agreement, title search, closing costs. And we would put an easement on the property to make sure it's permanently protected as open space. Troy has come out from Public Works and looked at the building and the well as well as the unmaintained road. And he anticipated that our town purchased it to remove the existing structure and fill the well cost approximately four hundred and sixty-five, four hundred and six, four thousand, excuse me, four thousand six hundred and fifty dollars. Four thousand would be to get a dumpster and six hundred and fifty dollars would be perhaps to put some processed gravel down on the road, just to be sure when he's putting the equipment in and out, he doesn't damage anything. If there were tires on the property, there would be a five dollar cost per tire. And that cost does not include the cost that he would pay out of his budget for about one week's of stamp time to do this. So that's just for cost of what he would have to expend outside of that. The Conservation Commission is not planning to apply for an open space grant for this property for a variety of reasons. One is it would not score very well because of the structure that's on it. They really don't like any structures to be on properties. We also anticipate this will not be a very large purchase. It would probably cost the town more to do the necessary items so we could apply for the grant because they require two high-level appraisals. They had to be done to a yellow book standard, which would probably cost around four thousand dollars for two of those appraisals. And also, they would probably require that we update the survey to include GMS coordinates because that's what we're doing now. And that would cost seven thousand dollars to do. So we don't, we think it would cost the town more to actually try to go for a grant at this point, so. What we'd like to ask the Board of Finance tonight is if you would consider some funding for the market appraisal, the maximum cost for that would be two thousand dollars. If you have any questions, I checked with Donna. The open space fund right now has seventy-one thousand dollars in it. And there's also twenty-five thousand dollars that will be added in as of July first from the CIP budget. One other thing I wanted to mention, a value of adding this property to the town, Towns Park would be so we would have complete control of, of those unmaintained roads that are on the borders with Fenton Ruby Park. Because right now, we don't have control. And even though they're unmaintained and considered abandoned, anybody who owns that property in the future would have right-of-way over those road beds. They could maintain those roads on their own. They could leave them open. People could go down there with ATVs. They could be dumping. It could create more ponds for the town. So this would be another value of just kind of securing those, those roads at this point. We did talk to the town of Ashford because of the, of the access, the best access is come through Lustig Road onto that unmaintained part of Burma. And because they're not maintaining that area either, there are some trees down and such. We have a verbal on that, but they would be willing to, you know, cut the trees out so we could access Burma Road. Some of the Conservation Commission members also suggested that we find out if we have a written right-of, right-of-way over Lustig Road. And if we don't, that perhaps the Board of Selectmen in each town could agree to that. So that we just have something going forward in the future if we purchase the property. There's also the opportunity to go in on that road bed if we wanted to and do timber harvest on that portion of Fenton Ruby Park if we wanted to do that or our forester felt it was support for the forest.
So Kathy, when you're, when you're talking about securing the, the roads bordering Fenton Ruby and that this would be a piece of that puzzle, do you know anything about the town's culpability on, you know, liability, I should say, for ATV accidents or whatever in that area?
Are, you mean, if we were to purchase?
If, if we, if, well, no, I meant if it were, if, if the security of that area is kind of left, it's kind of an, it's an un, unenforced order right now, right?
Right, right. Talking to Troy, we could put a gate up. That would be an additional expense. Obviously, you would put some orange rocks, you know, at the entrance because the, the property starts at the boundary with Ashford and Wellington. And that's where Burma Road starts. So we could put something there. We already have, if you look at the map, you can see it says rocks somewhere in the middle there on Burma Road that's closer to the parking area. That's just after where the DePilka property right-of-way is just south. Okay, you can see there's two small ponds on that. The DePilka family owns that. They have a camp there. They have a right-of-way through Fenton Ruby Park to get there. We have rocks at, at the end of Burma Road there because further down, it's toward the property of interest. That part of Burma Road is also unmaintained. People use it for a walking path now. And we have been able to keep out ATVs by putting rocks there. So that is what that will, so I think we could do the, the same on the other end if we owned both sides of the property.
Other questions for Kathy? One of the things I was wondering about the process, you know, Kat, do we have to go to town meeting anytime that anything out of open space is spent? Is that, Donna was trying to research the statute. It's not really spelled out in the statute, is it?
Carol Jordan, who's on our commission for twenty-five years and very knowledgeable and has looked into these things often whenever this comes up, has told us that we do need to go to town meeting. We could get, we could get a legal opinion on it if needed. But, you know, from basically the research she's done through the years, and I think she feels it's more transparent also.
Yeah, I, I definitely can see it for a land purchase.
Yeah.
For some of the preliminary spending to decide whether you want to purchase. It seems if it were a single issue in the dead of summer or something, it would like eradicate, I mean, the, the cost of a town meeting almost eradicates the, the trouble, you know. I mean, it's, well, the trouble, I shouldn't even say that because it's a lot of trouble, no matter what. But you know what I mean? It's just
If you weren't having.
calling everyone out to spend two thousand dollars and spending a thousand to do that, you know, plus their time. It just seems kind of crazy and.
We, we could certainly talk about getting a legal opinion, you know, especially moving forward.
Right.
And finding out if we can do that for small amounts or, you know, appropriating those kinds of things.
Well, we certainly don't want to be at crossroads with old Yankee ironed-in requirements, you know, mess up a sale or a potential sale. But I just, I'm just wondering about that.
I know in the past for the Towneich property, we had initially come in, I think it was twenty twenty, we only came in and asked for money to do the appraisal. And because of COVID and everything, town meetings were getting like pushed way out. We came back and we said, hey, we're going for a grant for this one. We gotta get these appraisals done. And the Board of Finance found some other money to do the appraisals at that point. So, but, you know, we don't need to use other money because the open space funds can be used for that. That would be your decision, obviously, to, to recommend something.
Yes, uh, did you have a bottom line number? All those numbers you gave us added up?
Oh, no, I didn't. I'm so sorry, but I can probably do it in my head. Do you want to, or we can do it together?
I guess, I guess is good.
I guess is good. Okay. Well, the upfront cost of evaluating the property would be two thousand three hundred and fifty to do the dam inspection and the market appraisal. And then if we move forward to offer a purchase price and come up with a purchase and sales, and then obviously we would go through title search, closing, you know, that, all that worked out and then put these in. That would be four thousand dollars for legal expenses. Once we acquire the property, we're going to have to remove the existing structure, fill the well.
All right, wait a minute. We skipped over price, the, the price of acquiring the property.
Um, we're not sure yet.
Do you have a guesstimate? Is it like twenty thousand, eighty thousand?
I'm guessing, no.
Hundred and fifty thousand?
Two to three thousand dollars an acre perhaps, which would be, the maximum would be twenty-two thousand dollars.
That, that's the number I'm looking for.
Okay.
Just does it.
So she wasn't finished on all three?
Oh, that's okay.
Is, is the fourth.
The Public Works estimate, did you have that of four thousand six hundred and fifty? That would be after the purchase. And we could use open space funds for that and would probably request that at town meeting along with the purchase price.
So eleven thousand in, in all the, the upfront costs or whatever, upfront and after purchase.
Yeah, so.
So half, you know, about half the, the purchase, conceivable purchase price, you know?
Yeah.
And what do you think about that value-wise overall? I mean, you did give us ideas about what value it provides, but when you guys talked about it, if the gross investment is thirty-three, did you, do, how do you guys evaluate that?
You know, it's a small part, it's a small parcel. And usually, we're looking for larger parcels, but it's contiguous with this large parcel. And it's like that, again, in that last little puzzle piece. So on the Ashford border, it would help us to have better control over the roads, which could become a problem for the park in the future, you know, if people start to open up that property and people are down there dumping or kids are riding around on the ATVs, you know, that would be our concern. So we feel it's worth the expenditure by the town.
It's kind of a strategic move.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
That was a good recap. Are there other questions? Joe, Jim, Kristen?
Just an aside, would you have to do the appraisal for a cost of that level?
Yeah, that's a good question. We talked about, I talked with the tax assessor about it. I asked her what process the assessors go through to come up with the values for the town. And she said they're not as accurate as market value appraisal. It was, it's a two thousand and eighteen figure. This would be a two thousand and twenty-three figure. What we want to make sure is we're not offering too much for the property. I guess that's, that would be the reason.
Has to be an appraisal.
If, you know, when you're going through these small parcels and putting out this much money, you know, it, it does seem kind of questionable, but.
Yeah, but I can see where you guys need to kind of do the due diligence and cross all the Ts if you're.
If we go to town meeting and we're asking for money for this and money to, for Public Works and so on and so forth. I mean, somebody might ask the question, well, how did you come up with a value of purchase price? You know, are we overpaying for this? That could be a potential question.
Thank you. So. Are you, is there consensus to move to do this tonight? Add a, by a proposed motion?
I was just wondering, this is for two thousand dollars to get them started. And they do have money in their account. And are we spending their money or our money?
We're spending their money.
Okay, I'm, I'm also spending their money.
It, it's open space money, which is, yes, not, not CC budget.
And so we, that's what we, that's why I was asking or the statutory question because we, for them to spend their money, we have to go to town meeting for even these small amounts incrementally, so.
But I understand there may be some town meeting coming up.
There is. So it's not a problem this time at all. It's like, and you, you know, we will not send you a portion of the bill.
Yeah.
We, as if we ever would. But I'm just thinking in, in a case where you wanted to move fast and it's an isolated thing, seems crazy to me. That's just the world of stuff. And I know not many people dwell there, so. So I'd like to move to recommend to the Board of Selectmen to call a town meeting to appropriate up to two thousand dollars from the Open Space Fund to the Fenton Ruby Park Edition for a market proposal of a seven-acre parcel on Burma Road and an engineering assessment of a dam on the property. Oh, I'm sorry, that's, scoot, take that out. Don't, you don't need that clause, Sam. Already done. Is there a second?
Yeah, a second. Okay.
Okay, Jeff. Okay, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Abstentions? Six oh vote. Okay. Now we will look at the property tax suspense list. Thank you, Kathy.
Thank you.
All. Let's see. Hi, Janice. Hi, Janice.
Hi, how are you?
Want to orient us in any way?
So, you know, we can jump right in. Um, I, did everyone receive a copy?
Yeah, it's like this. It's one sheet. That's the report that supports it.
Got it.
This is the part that we're actually.
So we're looking at a total this year, uh, I'm looking at a total to put in suspense, $16,599.53. Mostly made up of motor vehicle and personal property. Personal property is on a lot of businesses that have dissolved. So at this point, there's no way to get money from them because the business is no longer operating. I did reach out to the admissions office at um, UConn. To find out if any of these, a lot of the international students coming in, if they. Go over anything with them about having to pay car taxes and what you have to do to get a driver's license and all. And they did send me some information that all of the orientations, be it for grad students or undergrad students. They're all told that you're going to have to pay a car tax in the town in which you're living. Um, the bills are sent out in the summer. If you're not there, make sure they have a forwarding app for you. A lot of times you don't have a forwarding address. A lot of them, I just can't find whether they're still, you know. In the state somewhere or have moved back to whichever country they're from. Um, the, the bulk of it is a lot of the international students on the motor vehicle side. I think it's a probably about $8,000. That's then I requested last year, so at least the number's going down a bit.
Okay. Questions? For our revenue collector?
Sex, do we need to do anything about it or just?
We do need to do something about it, actually. Um. Let's see. We just need to pass it as a board so I can sign it and it can be certified in that way.
Right.
Um, so I'll move to accept the suspense list for fiscal year 23. And authorize the board of finance chair to sign the list.
Exactly.
Thank you. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Abstentions? What should we pass six oh? What's that?
Thank you.
Aye.
Oh, you're adding your aye, okay. Thank you, okay. Uh, so uh, Willington one fire department issue on the, the mold remediation. And Alex is here, you, you're the spokesperson, you know? I guess that, what's that?
Can I share my screen?
Sure. I think, can we do that? Okay.
Oh, nice picture.
This is on open house day.
All right. Everybody can see it, sorry. All right, so just going to run through this. Um, we did talk to, or we did bring up the board finance before, so where we, that we did have an issue. Um, so a little background, um, we started having complaints from our staff. Um, very foul order, stupid odor. Um, at our station 426 River Road, primarily coming from our office and our dayroom. Both of which act as bedrooms as well at night. Um, multiple attempts were made by the fire department to find the source, mask the odor, sanitizers, cleaners. Try to find the smell and we tore that firehouse inside and out trying to figure out what the smell is from. Um. Especially we're held beginning of February, um, with the board of directors and the membership on the necessity of the air quality test. Uh, throughout the station. That finally was done by the time it was scheduled or else by service master Mason on March 9th. On March 13th is when we had received the results of the test to confirm the presence of mold and moisture. So from there on March 14th, we did um, discuss or talk with the health department. Um, the town building official, um, primarily just because we have staff that live inside the building 24 hours a day. Um, what are our concerns and what should we be doing? Um, it was decided that because there is presence of mold, there was full numbers, although they weren't through the roof. Uh, because they are closed rooms uh, when they're sleeping. If the, if anyone wants to have some type of an allergy, something like that. Um, respiratory illnesses that they don't know of, um, being the presence of mold is not advised. So not being in a station is what we recommended. Um, that same day, we did have a joint meeting with Willington one, uh, Willington Hill Fire Department, uh, the first selectman and. Chair of the board of finance to go over what our steps were going to be immediately. Um, to make sure that our responses were going to change. How do we keep our staff together and working cohesively with Willington Hill to make sure that. Um, our number one objective services to the town did not suffer. Um. And that's when our primary response apparatus, um, with the staff in all of our operations, with the exception of our office. Um, were moved to the much smaller station in 143 River. Uh, which is this slide. Um, so we went from a four bay building, which we thought was really cramped being there. We didn't know what cramped was until we're actually here. But, um, so this is where we are right now. Staff still remains being able to work together. Our primary vehicles um, do fit in there, um, so nothing has changed as far as our response. Just one half, one part of town getting a little quicker response right now and taking a couple extra minutes to the village hillside. Um, but it's actually, it, it has been working. Truly well. Um, so building history, this building was built in 1981, it was a free pad building, uh, placed in the nine at Great Foundation. Uh, since it was built, I don't remember when this thing was built, but um, by pictures, this has had. They've done a lot of work as far as replacing the front of the building. It had, I think it was all metal at one point, now it has started stone. Um. So there, it has a newer, newer roof. Ten years ago, less than 10 years ago, there was a new roof, uh, and insulation put on the roof. Uh, along with a few other things. Uh, our first step, uh, once we got our staff situated, make sure that was taken care of, uh, was the notification to the insurance company. Um, the insurance companies had an adjuster out, they had an engineer out. Um, and done more air quality testing, which were about the same as what we had gotten, although they did a larger span. Um, testing than what we initially did. We initially did um, the office, the day room. And bathrooms. They did every room inside that building. Um, including the base. Um, to our surprise, the kitchen in the office were actually the two higher rooms. I don't know if that's just because they're in the corners or what the cause of that is. We didn't think the numbers in the, in the kitchen would have been as high as they were. We didn't really have an odor in there. Um, but the numbers were almost equal to the office and the kitchen. Um. So they had an engineer come out and look to see if they could find any laring thing with the building itself. Um, that they, they couldn't. Um, they did say that there's presence of groundwater that's coming up. Um. But that seems to be poor drainage, uh, coming down off the back of the hill. Um, we have picked Mr. Marshall brain quite a bit. Um, and shared the reports that we had gotten, what you guys have seen. Um, we gave him his, his expertise. Um, to try to come up with what's actually going on in the building. Um, so I may secondly receive the denial letter from the insurance company. Um, there's an exclusion part of the insurance policy. This is anything with groundwater is not covered. Um, so if it's being caused by groundwater, it's not covered through insurance. Uh, it would need to be an active god, a hailstorm, some big windstorm that repels up the side of the building, drops the roof off. Um, first pipes, something like that that would um, leak into the wall. Um, and that they have not found any evidence of that. Uh, so these are some of the pictures that, so we were able to open one section of the wall. Um, in the dayroom, we didn't trust open the wall in the office because that was where the higher numbers were. We didn't want to get into the wall and expose it. So this is just the first picture. Um, inside of walls is white mold on the bottom. There is black mold along with bottom edges um, on the inside. Uh, that's this picture. And it goes back. Um, this picture is actually the back wall. Um, so this picture was taken five or six days after it had rained. Um, and the back sea channel of our wall actually was still wet on the bottom. Uh, from moisture. Uh, and this wasn't when the water cable was high, it was right after the dryer period. Um, this is only a couple of weeks ago that we got this picture. Uh, so there's water coming up and with moisture coming in through what we can, what we think is the foundation. Um, but we really can't tell until we can open the walls. Um, we can't really see anything other than what the few pictures that we've been able to get. Um, this was just one more of the back wall, another picture in the sea channel, which is kind of hard to see. But that whole bottom is all rusted. Um. And it was wet along the sea chain. Uh, so we really can't do anything until we move to the next step of being able to get the sheetrock insulation out of the building. Um, we did have, and I believe Stephanie did use, send all of them the votes I had sent. Um, so service master by Mason, who is a, on the state bid list, they're the ones that have done all the work to this point. Um. They came room by room to. Be done for work, um, to get the sheetrock out, insulation out and to remediate the mold. Um, the fire department ourselves have done all, getting everything that we possibly can out of the building. Um, or at least out of those back sections of the rooms. Um, our base currently looks like a disaster area, but. Um. So we're at the point where we've got to get the mold remediated, we've got to get the walls open. So that we can figure out what we, what our next step is. Um, I really wish I knew exactly what we have to do to fix the problem. Um, until we can actually tell where the water's coming in. I have no idea. We know there's a drainage issue in the back. Um, but we don't know how expensive of a drainage issue we have. Um, by the adjuster, when they were there, he was able to see water in the middle of the office floor coming up by the lint. Which is a good 15 feet off that back wall. Off the back wall and it's a little closer on the sidewall, but the laminate itself, you could see moisture through the laminate. Um, and that was one of the great. Um, so we don't, we, we really have no idea until we can get this step done as to what we have. Or what, I wish I could say it's going to be this figure, but I have no idea what's the cost to get access.
And so I'm sorry, it.
I'm, I'm right part of it, of where we are right now.
What's that?
I'm, so I'm getting to the point where the, for the price of what we need to do to get to. Um, so what we, as I said, what we need to do right now is to get the sheetrock insulation and remediate the mold. Um, the price that we got for that was 32, just over $32,000. Um, you know, so you do everything, company comes in, they remediate everything. Um, they take the flooring out, put everything back on the concrete. Um, the one exception that we don't know is once they get the walls open, how many of the, if they're going to have to remove studs and stuff like that. Because they are always studs behind it. We don't know what any of that stuff looks like. Um. But they, they were confident that they would be within where they are, they believe. Um, so they're at $32,000. Um, one thing that we do need to have done is the HVAC sub has to come off out of the walls or off the walls. We have two split units that, there's none in here, there's split many AC units. Um, in our dayroom and the office, those all have to come off. Um, that was the second quote, was the quote, pick them off and put them back on, which was another 20, 2900. Um. And we. Yeah, so that's where we're at. We, we need about 35,000 to get this done, uh, with a hope of maybe a 5% contingency on it for unknowns to, once they open the walls.
Thirty-five contain 5% or?
No, it doesn't.
So we add that 5, 35.
They don't do any of that. I was just going to guess 38.
That's 110%. Sometimes. $1,700. Maybe 1,800.
So. 30.
So what is it?
36,000. Move the fiber, that's a 5%. Um. Now, this is, huh?
Yeah, that's a good idea.
Yeah, yeah, that's true. I mean, we always.
Yeah.
Stay it that way, yeah.
Yeah. And I really wish I could say that this is the only meeting that we're going to have to bring up for talking about money. Soon as we get to figure out what it is, we're done.
So this doesn't have any of the stuff cost and that replacement?
Can I, can I have the clarification on what this is covering? Because there's a, there's a sketch on the back of that sheet with some green walls highlighted.
Yeah, so it was all of the sheetrock. I, I did verify that with them. It was all of the sheetrock. Um, initially they were just talking. Um, the inside walls and then they realized that it was double painted on like the bayside. So they had done that sketch before, um, they realized that it was.
So it's all walls, all, all walls, roofs and that.
All walls and roofs. And they're going to take every piece of sheetrock out of it.
The back wall?
Yeah.
Or, or is it no sidewalls or any?
Oh, no, no, all, every piece of sheetrock from the bay's back.
Is it going to be a whole wall or just lower four feet?
Whole.
Are they sure? Did they advise that that's what's necessary, I guess is the.
So they were, they know the back wall, they said yes, because they need to get the insulation out and that is at least ceiling high. Um. And they were recommending doing the front wall as well. Because, I, if you look at in the, in the dayroom where the bed was. Um, so we had removed the bed and there's actually black mold against that back wall. Um, and without actually opening anything up, they were planning for the worst.
So this is re-sheet rocking all of that?
No, no, no.
No, just removing.
Just removing.
And then what?
Then we have to figure out where the water is actually coming in. And what's going to take this takes in.
The only other question I have about this quote is like, based on that sketch that they did, I can't get their square foot numbers to align at all with the wall surfaces in an eight foot high. Okay, well, they're all inflated. Um, as far as, uh, let's go to locker room, let's go to dayroom, tear out drywall cleanup, bad cat three. It's a 1,137 square feet. Of wall surface that they're falling out. That in the, in the dayroom.
In the dayroom, I'm sorry.
Those are eight foot high walls, for example. And there's 45 B plus 32.
67.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. That's.
Yeah.
45 plus 32. And eight, that's 616 square, so the number that they're quoting.
Does that include the ceiling as well?
It does not.
Because the ceiling was, I did the dayroom, the office, the ceilings were coming out.
Okay.
Because there's insulation on it.
Or, I have some questions to this.
And what about the floor? Didn't you say there's water in the floor?
Yes, so the dayroom and the office have carpet and laminate flooring, those are coming up. That is in there.
It's, because there's no reference, there's clean floor in this. There's no reference to ceiling in any of these things as, as being captured, so I just, you know, I want to make sure you guys are clear with the scope and that.
Right, so the dayroom. Dayroom and the office all had insulation in between the ceiling or up in the ceiling. So that's why they were taking the ceiling down.
But even, I mean, even that, to be honest with you. And if you add the ceiling cost of the dayroom, you're still under by 200 something square feet.
Okay.
And what they're abating, what they're saying they're abating, um, and that's consistent throughout all of these rooms.
Okay.
Um, so it's the only question I had, I didn't know if you talked to them about it, but it seemed. Um. Yeah, it just seemed odd and the numbers.
Okay.
Don't quite line up. Um. But I don't know how they're, you know, I didn't talk to them about how they quoted this, so I'm not saying it's necessary, it's, you know?
Yeah.
I'm worried that I just wanted to see here. I'm worried that I just wanted to see your verification on it.
So the plan of the scope of work that we got when we met with them was that every piece of sheetrock in the firehouse was coming out. Down to bear studs, all of the insulation and then remediating.
And if they have to take the studs as well, that's in the contingency or?
Have they determined that the selective? Is it, would it? I guess what I'm asking, sometimes it's cheaper to just, if we think it's that bad or if we think we're heading down that road, sometimes it's cheaper to just say, instead of selectively, all the labor involved and selectively definitely. And then going back to then later remove the studs where I find it is that bad. Sometimes you just. Walk down under back end. You know.
And they had said that too, but in all honesty, we're trying to physically responsible here that we can. If we don't have to. Not. But I don't know. I really, without being able to open the walls, I have no idea.
Is it? And so you have one quote?
Right, we have one quote. And we really haven't gone after anybody else since they were on the same business. We're more than willing to go out and try to get other estimates. But we need to get the ball. We've really been hung up waiting on insurance. Insurance took a long time to. To the adjuster engineer.
So I'm kind of unwashed in all this. You remove all this sheetrock and then you. And then what? I mean. And then you clean, you clean all the mold off of that.
Yep.
And then they reinstall it all?
No.
Okay.
They just got it. Then they got to figure out what the quote is.
It's going to cost more to put it back too. Spoiler alert.
Well, it is.
More than it does to take it off?
Yes. Coming down.
But one other question on this script. Do you get, that's eighty one. You probably don't have any asbestos or anything like you don't have any floor tiles. Have you guys covered up or any hazardous materials you're working on?
No. No, because it's concrete all the way back for the flooring.
Yes.
There was no, there was nothing under the rug or the laminate. It was straight down on the concrete.
Straight on.
The only thing we have is the epoxy floor in the rug. We've replaced the floor a couple of times already.
You just got to ask, you know, that's what most of the.
And we have no idea what is going to be entailed in the drainage. We, to what we've been told and Jim, correct me if I'm wrong, we're going to need some type of drainage. It looks on the backside of that building.
Yeah.
But we don't know what.
Do you have like a best case scenario and a worst case that you can plan to?
So.
Or just assume worse?
I'll let. If Mr. Marshall doesn't like chime it in.
I mean, you know, I haven't evaluated it in any like extreme detail, but you know, this is a slab of grade building, graded to rear of this. It's a pre-engineered building from. Forty five years ago. And this thing is right at grade and at the base of the hill and graded. It's kind of even enveloped the back of the, you know, the metal. Cladding on the back of this thing at grade.
So I did something.
Realistically, you're probably doing some sort of, you know, you're digging out the some portion of the foundation wall. You know, getting some sort of a barrier on there and then some sort of storm. You know, drainage system infiltration system that gets water out around the building to the north side, I think is the low end, right?
First stone, per acre.
Yep, all that fun stuff. But there's a lot of, you know, you get a lot of equipment in the way back there. I mean, and that's honestly, and I thought like, it's an old building. It's an old pre-engineered building.
Yeah.
It's, that's what makes me. Nervous about it. It's. Trust me, putting, putting all this money into that, I mean, honestly. It deserves a new building, quite frankly, but we're not there yet. But. You know, it's, it's just one of those things where it feels like this is going to turn into quite an investment on a building that is, you know, it's got its age. That isn't easy to modify because of the way it's pre-engineered and the age of it. Which, and I know you have forthcoming expansion plan where, you know, addition plans to this as a part of the effort. I, I'm nervous going down a road too far without really having an understanding and whether this becomes a most cost effective solution for you guys or whether this is really a.
And I think.
Put up a new pre-engineered. You know, building in the end, thinking ahead to what you mean. I just don't know. It feels, we don't have the information yet, so.
And I think we're, I honestly, I think we're there. Fox team as you do. We obviously don't want to spend how the taxpayer money on something that's not beneficial, but at the same time, we know. Where what we have now with the little station, that's not a perfect fix. That is not a. That is not a long term solution. For a multitude of reasons. But. We can only present the stuff that we know right now. I can't even, I am not an expert in this matter by any stretch of imagination. But we're doing the best we can in trying to be upfront with the board of finance and board of selectmen to work on this together, not just. Us coming in and saying, we think we should do this. We want to have an open conversation with both boards. This is what we know. How do we move forward? I mean, that's, that's it in a nutshell. This, you know, we can't move forward without some money to do the demolitionists to see to the problems.
You were looking at the pre-existing drainage, but there were some issues with corners being able to see it out. So is anything coming up of that?
No. So we know there's no drains per se for the, there's two drains for the downspouts. But as to where they run is a million dollar question.
Um. Daylight somewhere.
Yeah. Public Works, there's one, thankfully, one employee from Public Works left that remembers doing drainage work there. Sometime in the nineties. And believes it goes in between us and the property next door. The house next door. But nobody knows. All of the prints for that property, they're not.
They're not anecdotes.
They're not anecdotes. There, yeah.
How did Susan let that go?
I have absolutely no idea. We do know where the, we do know where the septic is and then we have a water oil separator that we found when we were doing the oil tank. But it's a.
Eighty one was pretty Susan.
Yeah.
Okay, eighty one, yeah.
Eighty one.
Yeah, it was.
So. There's the plans downstairs. We've been through them with them. And yeah, nothing matches. So.
So it's like. I mean, is there any, back to Christina's question, there's no, is there any like, you know, mold whisperer who's, you know, conversant with your. Conversant with your building construction kind of situation, which is butted up against a hill with a prefab building. Is there anyone who can sort of say, here's the range, here's, here's your best picture, here's your worst picture? So we can get an idea of some kind of.
Not that we've been able to find. And everybody we've talked to is that you have to have a wall open so you're going to see where the water ran. I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, I'm more concerned you're going to have problems with it. Well, I'm not concerned you're going to have them necessarily, but you know, you're below grade. You might have rusted. It's been a long standing water.
Yeah, but the pictures, you can see there's rust in the back sea channels.
How much, how much of the insulation on the prefab, the pre-engineered building are you taking up on that back?
Off to the mezzanine.
Okay, so you're taking up to like the first guard.
Unless they see more and then they're going to go all the way. And honestly, that's the, until they pull it, the hard part is once they get it out, it's helping it to back in.
The buildable part of that lot is pretty tiny. Is that your situation that you're?
It actually isn't pretty tiny. You can actually move forward a little bit and go to the side more. So there is buildable space. It's just. There's ways to rearrange it to make it work better. But in nineteen eighty one, it was not a forefront thought of. Four years down the road, where they needed to be. That was moving on to the cell station.
Is the plan for the addition, it, some of that is built on top of this now?
Fifty two hundred square foot addition. Yeah, two story, two story.
Okay, that's the addition itself.
So any of those rooms, are those rooms being offset into the new addition generally? So you're getting more upper out of space? You know, when that addition happens.
So we, the original plan, the roofs in the back, one was actually going to become a fire marshal office.
So the plan is to maintain those.
Yes. Just because there are some things like the fire marshal now has had an office. So there was going to be a fire marshal office. The new building would have a dedicated E O C conference room. Just, yeah.
Yeah, that is.
An actual workshop. You know, one of the rooms in the back is going to be turned into a workshop so that we're not trying to. In storage.
Goes back to the question of, you know, how selective do you really need to be at the long term plans, you know, to do something? If you weren't using that space or if it was going to be additional, you know, vehicles or, you know, proper stage your train space or whatever the case may be. You know, it might just be worth the forethought. Okay.
So the request now is for the thirty eight thousand.
Thirty seven.
Thirty seven thousand to, and so there's a meeting for that?
Yes.
And where would it come from, Donna?
So there is some money in the selectmen's budget in the health insurance because of enrollment changes. So I would suggest a transfer from the health insurance to the capital projects. And then set up a thirty seven thousand dollar capital project for mold remediation.
Going back to Jim's concern about the quote.
I would question how long did it take you to get, you know, to solicit a couple of other quotes?
Only a couple of weeks. I don't, I don't really know.
And I'm not saying, again, I don't want to say ServiceMasters.
No, I just, I just don't know how they quoted it. I know they did. I can't, that's why we use, we have used them in the past for the COVID stuff. And they were all preparing them.
You know, I'm thinking that this is such, this, this is not, you know, this is maybe a piece of the road, you know? We don't know how long the road is. I would, you know, I think I would, it would be behoove you to establish a relationship with more than one outfit anyway. If it's a longer road than than just this beginning teardown part or whatever. So. I'm, I'm thinking that would be a good idea. And then maybe if you had those in time for the. For the June meeting, we would still be in advance of transfer time. The transfer deadline, of course, is going to be the end of June when the fiscal year stops. But the other question is, will you be able to do the spending for this or the work for this? What's the timeframe? August? Donna, do you know?
I, and I, yeah, I have no idea. I know we were tight. They were saying it was three to four weeks. Once we gave them the green light, it would be close three to four weeks. To go a little bit.
Well, if it's, if it's in capital projects, then there is no deadline. It's because it gets moved out of.
Oh, okay, yeah. Right? Yeah, never mind. Yeah, we're fine. Okay. So, so.
I have no idea what they're going to find when they get in there. You know.
Another quote. Like ten percent.
You have to bet, make sure that's, I honestly don't. This is usually stuff that's handled by honorable man. You know. We don't want to take liability for any of this. From an architect's perspective. I don't know. I, you know, I honestly don't know. I just question it just because like question the numbers. I would question it other. Yeah, you know, or I can't make the numbers work in my head, but the, and the graphic they provided is a part of that quote, so.
We have no problem getting more quotes and sending them in.
Is there some way that we can touch base on this quote with the?
Yeah.
With feedback on the math?
Yeah, I mean, it would be good to get clarity on, again, even just updating this product to make sure that you're getting drawable on the ceiling that they're covering the insulation because, you know, there's.
I believe I have that in an email. It's covered all of that. I just didn't.
Yeah. But.
Does that sound like a good plan to you all or do you?
Sure.
Is, does anyone feel differently about?
I just, I'm torn. I mean, I don't want to delay him more because we're going to need to, you know, we're to figure out how the solution is. It's, it's the initializing. It's the initiating project for every next step for them.
Let me put it this way. If you get, if you get quotes sooner, would you guys be open to a special meeting to just deal with that?
Yes, yeah, absolutely.
But then there would be another town meeting.
Oh, yeah. The town meeting, they're, they're going toward is the thirtieth. So either way, there would be, yeah. If we did it in June, there would be two.
When would you need to have, make that deadline? Would you need the quotes at all? And have a special meeting?
I think to get in the town meeting, we would have to vote on this tonight. Yeah. So if we, if we vote, can we, does it send a signal if we vote for a certain amount? Guys, if we do that and then meanwhile sharpen the pencil in the interim? I mean, nothing in this says, we, it says, we're saying an up to a certain amount. But I don't, just so that that doesn't like tie your pants if we're, we're saying that upfront because our expectation is knock something off of it. If it's, if it's a little flirty.
Worst case scenario, this is the love here. Get it into the company and get it started and then operational. Gets us that much quicker at getting those people out of the cell station and back into work. This is my living quarters. Isn't somebody sleeping in the kitchen right now or in the equipment room?
Do you want to? Do you want to, I think we have to say, we don't have to say town meeting because this is a transfer.
Correct. It's a budget transfer.
Oh.
I move, we, we.
Just budget transfer.
Oh, okay.
I move, we transfer thirty seven thousand dollars from zero eight three one employee insurances to zero five zero three capital projects. Wyndham Fire Department one mold remediation.
Wellington, what'd I say?
You said Wyndham. We got enough trouble with our own costs. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, discussion. So I'm going to go revisit since we got confused with the town meeting thing. That is not a guiding principle here. Do we, do we then do in that event, do we want to? Open up the, the quotage a little here and, you know, get other players in and reconsider this in our June meeting? Because there is not a town meeting requirement, so that will not be a further delay.
I'm happy. I think it's.
Or, or a special meeting if they can, if they can get the quotes sooner.
Well, we would be, we'd be authorizing a certain dollar or a hundred, two dollar amount for thirty, thirty seven that we settled on.
Yeah.
So they can go solicit additional quotes, you know, as they're covered one way or the other, whether they're going to need to do something like this is.
What, what I'm worried about is the next steps after that. And when we, when, but potentially you could find out some things now. And then in June, ask for more money. And we actually would have money in June that we could use, but once we get to July, we're, we're in the new fiscal year and we can't reserve anything after that. So I think it behooves everyone for you guys to move fast and figure it out. And it would, I think we need to know what, what the potential risk is here.
So get started on this phase and hopefully by our June meeting, we'll know enough to.
To know if we need to preserve more, like how much. We know there's going to be more. We just don't know how much.
Does that sound good to you guys?
Yeah, yes. We need to get going. So, yeah, right now we're two minutes away. So.
Any other discussion? Or opinions and comments?
Well, I just have like a tech, a question that's been, been on my mind about your nonprofit status and, and transferring this money. Where are you guys with that?
Everything that the accountant, because there was such a. I mean, there was quite a few years.
Fifteen, thirteen at least. Yeah, no, it's twenty ten.
I, I'm sorry.
Twenty ten, I think, or twenty nine.
What we were told was. What we were told was it's not going to be something overnight, um, so they've had everything and it's just taking. There was a lot.
D I R S has it or the account?
So they're filing all the stuff with the, the IRS. The account are, um, yeah.
So then, so can we as a town, trans- legally transfer money to you all?
We have a contract.
You're not a nonprofit, though, what are you, you're, are you?
Your corporation.
Or a corporation.
But you're not nonprofit.
Correct, we're not, not in the moment, but we haven't been with our buddy either.
Well, I know, right, so we've been either, we've been potentially breaking the law. For thirteen years or however long it's been.
It's. It's more serious than I think.
I, I.
People realize, I mean, one of the things I've been thinking, Alex, is, is it an accountant's issue or is it, do you guys need to have a, you know? Have your attorney look into this? To get right with the IRS, I mean, maybe it's work for the accountant, but I'm not sure an accountant.
I.
A single, a stray accountant trying to solve it. You know, a thirteen year old problem or ten year old problem, whatever it is, 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 uh. Gonna do it.
Building blocks, you were the building blocks of town. It's, it's owned by the town, uh, I'm sorry, it's owned by the corporation. Um, but the town paid off the last of the mortgage and we don't know why. That was before my time, so I don't want to make that sound like it's an excuse, but, um. No, it was just paid off because it was so little left on it, just to get rid of. That expense.
It's, uh, it's definitely a. It's a serious fiduciary gap here, you know, to not have that, to not be right with the IRS. In your, in your agreement, it specifies that that's. Your, your. Being right with the law, to put it in layman's terms, is on, is, and the cost of doing that is on the corporation's. Shoulders, not a town liability.
Right.
And that puts us in a, that puts us in an uncomfortable.
So what about the other one?
They, they. So they have it, they're five oh one C three and their nine nineties are all filed and they're on, you can see it online. Um. You know. Uh, if you're accepting donations, that's another issue.
Now, you can't legally accept donations if you're not a non, a legal nonprofit. Or, that's just one little part of it, but there's a lot that goes into it, that, I mean. I don't know.
And I, I wish I had an answer for that, I, I don't.
I think it, I think, uh. I think if you all could. Uh. Yeah, I mean, I think you might need legal counsel, but the definite. I'm just telling you what I know, what I know from experience. You, but you, uh, I think you need to fast track the IRS issue. Because we've been told things like, we didn't know the wrong, it was going into the wrong cubby hole in the mailroom and. We didn't know that, you know, about these tax issues and stuff.
That was a completely different tax.
Oh, is that a different issue? Okay, nevermind. I'm going to build a wall that's mold free between my memory of that then, okay, uh. But at any rate, this is too long, this is too long to have it.
I, I don't disagree with you, I just wish I hadn't.
Cause we, we started talking seriously though, if, you know, a year ago about this, so. Um, is it possible for us to get something, some status from your accountant that's, that's specific about?
I.
Progress and expectation, because once it goes to the IRS, that's another, who knows, endless period of time while they review it all. Um, this is a long time, I mean, honestly, I don't see that we would be able to embark on any big building project. With this hanging, we're just talking about the existing building right now. Um, but for future. It would tie that up.
This is totally aside, they're both not, it's an aside, but as the department owns the land, how does that, you know, investment by the town in that property? Especially if it winds up being more than the cost of the building itself, you know, down the line as they do an addition, if they do an addition or an expansion of that property.
The town didn't invest in that property, the department bought it out of their resources.
Correct, but if the taxpayers are funding.
Right, but I think there was talks of this.
Oh, there was, I, I, I mean, I know Tom told C I P, wasn't it C I P? We asked that question, we asked that question and he's, and he expressed that. They would be, you know, that that would be town property after, after.
Same with the property down there, we don't know why he wants to transfer to the town and more, they're staying, got done, but. That's relatively easy one.
Yeah, so. Seems like what?
Relatively easy thing legally to change it from then to, from, from department to the town. Quick claim.
Not until it gets running.
Yeah, so we got, it's got. That one's not, I'm just saying, it's an instance, it's separate. Right, right. Why would the building be separate from the one? It shouldn't be, everything should belong to the town, that's what I'm saying, uh, because the town's building a new apartment, we should own it. And we should own the land underneath it.
Well. For tonight's business, shall we get back to the, shall we call the question or?
Yes.
I, uh, uh, is there further discussion on the, on the motion on the floor? Okay, thank you, um. Okay, so the motion is, let, to repeat the motion, it's, uh, moved to transfer thirty seven, up to thirty seven thousand. From, uh, zero eight, three, one employee insurances to zero five, oh, three capital projects. Wellington Fire Department One Mold Remediation. And we have a second on that, um. All in favor?
I, I.
I.
I, I.
Oppose? Abstentions? Six oh. Thank you all.
Thank you.
I know it's painful for you guys.
You have to do the insurance stuff, that's the worst of it.
Yeah, talk later, okay? All right. Um. Is Mike Damata on camera, hi Mike, um, this is about, uh. A proposal for a project to scan and digitize property records to replace. Mold again contaminated documents. And Mike, I asked Mike if he would come and talk to us about this project because. Uh, it's one of those things that has an impact on every citizen who needs to. Access their property records in town or any officials to, um. And it's one, and it's, it's a, it's a problem also created by mold. Would you like to talk about this, Mike?
Sure, yeah, thank you, and I appreciate, um, the, the, the minor fire drill that occurred for you to put me on the agenda. And I know that it's sort of this flurry at the end of the fiscal year, uh, so I appreciate you accommodating me. Um, we talked about this a little bit when I was here a couple of months ago for the budget requests. Um, many, many years ago. Land use, building department files, et cetera, were stored offsite, um, and at some point, a decision was made that they come back into, uh, the town hall. Um, they were, they, they have been and continue to be stored in the basement, which until recently was a dirt floor. Two problems kind of arise from that situation, one, when the files were actually physically moved to the town hall. They were not, um, kept or placed in any sort of organization of any kind, they were essentially boxed and dropped. And then subsequent to that, um, w- water leaks and dirt floors and no air movement, et cetera. Caused for significant degradation to a lot of the files. We have a document management system, Laserfish, which has been in, in town for many years and, um, there is. A significant portion of records which have been scanned, um, and, uh, in two thousand nineteen. The server, um, that was housed in town hall that backed those files up, uh, was corrupted and, uh. Approximately forty percent of those files were, uh, were lost. Um, so, uh, through sort of the back half of COVID, you may have noticed a large shipping container that was next to town hall. Um, and what we actually did was, we moved all the files out of the basement, um, and our department went through and. Basically pulled apart all the files which could not be saved, they were either covered in mold, um, were completely destroyed due to water, had fallen apart. Um, and then had to go through the process with the state to let them know and, and, um. Provide to them a plan with how we were going to ensure that this wouldn't happen again. Um, so what we have now are. Two dozen file cabinets that we got free from the Yukon surplus store, which are downstairs in the basement, we have, um, many files which are there. Um, that are no longer completely covered in mold, um, and, you know, stuck together, et cetera, but. We really have no idea what's there, um, there was no catalog when they were brought, we. If someone shows up to our office today and, and says, I'd like to know who poured my foundation. Um, unless we have that file scanned, we have no idea as to who built our house. Um, where that original building permit might be, where s- some of those other pertinent building files may exist because. The, the, the documents were not cataloged. Um, so. What I did was, after the budget request that I made, um, in March, I reached out to a vendor, um, that does scanning. To try to get an order of magnitude cost, he came out and looked at everything, we are. Approximately five hundred and ten thousand pages of documents, um, is, is what we have, uh, sort of in, in the basement. That would need to be scanned now that we've gotten rid of everything that was lost. Um, and the project would involve them coming to the town hall, boxing everything up, cataloging the boxes. Taking it to their facility, scanning each document, indexing each file. And providing us with a digital record, a backup secure hard drive and a. A database of the files that are in each box and then, you know, an overall document of, you know, of, of. Part of all the boxes in total. Um. The cost to do all of that after looking with the amount of material that we have, um, is. In the realm of eighty two thousand dollars. Um, and sort of after looking at that and talking and, and understanding, you know, what needs to be done as far as. Fiscal year responsibilities and when number, when things would need to be spent, um, I, I had a follow up phone call in anticipation of presenting to you tonight. With, uh, the, the vendor Rico, um, and asked what's the, what is the possibility of us getting? You know, this type of work done and what would be the timeframe? Um, and the discussion that I had with him would be that, um, we would not get more than half of that done. By the August requirement. Um, so my, my sort of top end would, the, the top cost would be approximately eighty two thousand. We have department savings, which, uh, I think offset those costs in total. To make the ultimate request approximately sixty six thousand, um, and so half of that would be. Apro- approximately thirty two or thirty three thousand, we, we could not get more than that done. Within the, the deadline for the fiscal year.
What is, I'm sorry, you, you, how much did you, would bring the eighty two down by what?
So I think that, that through savings that we are going to have, as well as the twenty two, the twenty three, twenty four. Document retention line item in our budget, it brings the eighty two request in total down to sixty six, five. Um, and then looking at that and trying to get half the project done, we would cut that request in, in half.
The project is still eighty two, the total, right, so half would be forty one?
If you went with the, the, the initial cost, yes.
Yeah, but what you need, if they're gonna get half of that work done, you need, now you, you, you apply half of your eighteen thousand, sixteen thousand. Towards this year and you save, I'm just trying to figure out where those savings are, you know, and how that, so if we take half of eighty two. Would all of that sixteen thousand dollars come off of that forty two, meaning we're really, the request is only twenty six? I don't, I, I don't know how you're distributing your savings, I guess is what I'm asking, if we split this project.
I, yeah, I have, because the savings that we have would be within our current fiscal year budget, so I would spend that all down because I, I would. That would go away. Um, and then. Basically.
So it's twenty five thousand dollars, not forty two, not. Yeah. That's how great to me.
And so I, the initial request and, and I, and I get it, I was very unhappy with the amount of money that, that was. Was told this was gonna cost. Um, I have this operating line that will start as of July one. My initial hope was if we got it all done with savings, then that line would come off and be done. And we wouldn't carry that five thousand dollar line moving forward because the project would be completed, we digitize everything that comes in now. So we don't need any recurring expenses, there's no maintenance costs associated with it, so we could get it done with the savings and then. Just, just be done with the project. Um, but given the, the, the costs associated with it, I'm trying to figure out, you know, the, the best way to do it and I. I don't think we could get anything more than that done with the, the current constraints. Um, the other thing that is part of this quote is what they will call the, what, what they're referring to as heavy preparation. Because the files are in bad shape, they're in boxes that are not, you know, not in great condition, they're not cataloged, they're not all. Perfectly aligned, eight and a half by eleven, you know, brand new computer paper, and many of them are. You know, not in great shape as far as mold and other things, and we've had issues with staff interacting with the files. Um, the heavy prep work, all of that is going to be done by them, so boxing, inventory, transport, et cetera. There's a lot more work that goes into dealing with these files and scanning them correctly because they're in such bad shape.
How much did you say would be, you know, a dollar amount on the piece of this that would be doable by, by August or? Into August?
Yeah, so, um, they felt that based upon the volume of the five hundred and, and seven thousand sheets or, or pages, that they. They would be able to get through half for the August, but not anything more than that.
Um, okay.
Was, was that contingent upon authorization to proceed by a certain date, Mike?
Um, we didn't discuss that specifically, um, I explained to him that I was having this conversation. Um, tonight, but I, I think they understand, you know, the obligations, they, they've done this before, but I don't have that specific date.
So. You were looking at, y- your, your question, Jim, was apply all the savings on the first part.
Well, he's got sixteen grand that goes away at this fiscal year, so he's going to apply that now.
Is it sixteen grand that you would be able to apply in savings? Or what was the actual figure?
He said eighty two down to sixty six, that's why.
Sixty six.
So that, right, so that includes, um. Existing budget and then there's a five thousand dollar document scanning line item that becomes available July one. So I would apply that. Um. As, for the July first piece, so the remainder would be five, nine. Ten, five. Yeah. So the ten, five would come out of this year's operating through savings between, between both the land use department and also we're, talked to the building department. Because many of these records are theirs and, um, they also, you know, would partner and, and use saving, uh, savings that they have. Um, so we would, we would apply that first and then. Um, use the, the five thousand as well, which is what takes it from the eighty two to the sixty six. I should also, I guess, mention that, you know, we reviewed every cabinet, but they didn't count every sheet, so if we have a. Four hundred and fifty thousand sheets instead of five hundred and seven thousand sheets, obviously there would be a savings, we're paying by volume, so they're not, it's not a lump sum. So if we, if we, um, enter into a contract with them for. Ten thousand dollars and we have a savings, that's fine, but otherwise we would stop at that ten thousand, they're not gonna say, as it turns out. You have six hundred thousand, so you owe us more money, there would not be an increase, we wouldn't, I wouldn't come back to you and say, as it turned out. There would not be an increase, we wouldn't, I wouldn't come back to you and say, as it turned out, we need more money.
I'm just, I'm so, I I don't mean to be to belabor this, is it sixteen thousand in applied savings with the the ten or fifteen, five? That you're talking about knocking off that eighty two thousand quote?
So the 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 calculation that I have is eighty two thousand, thirty two dollars and fifty one cents. The savings that I am looking at through the land use departments, the building departments and the five thousand document scanning as of July one, takes the total down to sixty six thousand, five hundred and thirty two dollars.
But they can only do half this year.
They could only do half if we had to get it all done by that August deadline, right?
Yeah, that's the, that's the high end.
That's, so so you have sixteen thousand in your budget right now. You can do half, that costs forty one. So if we give you twenty five, that gets you through to August first, and then you come back and you see us for forty one next year.
Right. And then if that would be the case, as of the end of next fiscal year, I would eliminate the five thousand dollar line that I would be carrying in the operating budget because the project would be done. Yep, exactly.
Oh, yeah, that's, that's two years from now, I'm not worried about two years from now, I'm worried about tonight. So we need a motion for twenty five thousand dollars, right?
Okay, let me give you a motion.
Move we give, oh, oh, you have a motion?
I think I do.
Oh, good. Before we read that, Michael, one last question, if you don't mind, that server issue is twenty eighteen, there's no, I mean, you're gonna have it backed up now, but on a separate backup drive as well, but there's no concerns about losing data again, we've resolved all of those past issues and, you know.
Yeah, so we, yeah, we we did not replace that server, we moved to a cloud based la- laser fish installation, so we don't have that. And we we have our own backup drive, which Robin keeps safe in the town clerk's vault as a redundancy.
So it's, is it up to twenty five? Is that what you all have?
I did it in my head, so twenty five, five.
I think, yeah, I think twenty, I think twenty five, five is right, because
I think you're right.
Yeah.
There may be some small change in there, but.
Okay. And this is a transfer, so, okay. Move, a move to transfer up to twenty five thousand, five hundred dollars from a series of of lines. Let's see. I'll leave it at this, Donna, because we originally had, we're like fourteen, five off.
We have to tweak our numbers.
We had to tweak our numbers.
Five thousand in employee insurances that we can transfer out of. We have fifteen thousand, okay, so that's Department oh eight, three, one. And we have fifteen thousand in Department oh one, three, four.
From Assessor.
From Assessor, and that's salary turnover. So so now we're up to twenty forty five thousand, five hundred. And we can get that in Department oh one, three, seven, Revenue Collector, because of salary turnover with the Assistant.
How much is that, fifty five hundred?
Yes, fifty five hundred. And those three should total twenty five thousand, five hundred.
Okay, let's see, fifteen. That's right, okay, so let me try this again, Sam, and I'll get this for you. A move to transfer twenty five thousand, five hundred dollars of that five thousand from zero eight, three, one Employee Insurances. Fifteen thousand from zero one, three, four Assessor, Assessor Salary. And five thousand, five hundred from zero one, three, seven Revenue Collector. The Revenue Collector Assistant Salary. Sir, second?
Second.
Thank you.
Two, oh five, oh three.
Oh, I'm sorry, two, oh five, oh three Capital Projects, Document Scanning. That's important.
Thank you, Samantha.
You still second that, Pete?
Yes.
Good to know. Any further discussion on that? Rocket science, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstentions, motion passes six to zero. Thank you, Mike.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Sounds like an exciting project that we need to do. Can you imagine just any, any citizen, any given citizen in town deciding, I gotta do this, I need to know this. I can count on my town records and right now they can. So crazy land. Okay, I just want to go back and clean up something that I didn't do when we were setting the mill rate. And that is the fund balance. So I would like to move to appropriate a million dollars from the anticipated twenty twenty three general fund balance to the approved twenty twenty four general government budget.
It's the, it's PC.
It's the schools, schools, yes, it's one we voted on. Is there a second? Thank you, Jim. Yes, I just missed it. No, 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 it's not seven, it's um it's well, it should, it's it's always done in accompaniment to Other discussion?
So it's not technically the
The general
The million dollars that's in CIP, it's it's really money that's, it happens to be the same amount, but it's not, it's not literally that money. If that makes sense.
Go.
No.
I think I'm, I'm asking the question to clarify.
Okay.
Yeah, is that right, Dan? So so we we we're going to use a million dollars in, that's excess in our general fund, which is like there's a checking account, and we're moving it to offset the 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 amount we have to collect in taxes. It happens to be the same amount as the million dollars is what we were talking about and what got approved to be for the school projects. But there was another four hundred and sixty thousand that was just capital projects on top of that, and plus all the other stuff. So the mil, it's just a coincidence, it's the same money for, it's not literally that we're moving that.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you for that clarification, I was confused and I was, I was going to be wrong.
Well, so we could move eight hundred thousand instead, and then we would have a higher low rate.
Yes.
Yeah.
Gotcha.
I'm wondering if somebody set off the alarm, yeah, sounds like it.
I think it's somebody set the alarm downstairs, so maybe Phil was there and had left.
What did you say?
I think maybe someone was downstairs and turned the alarm on, so you're all good.
I heard the door bang.
Okay, thank you, let's come to the vote here, all in favor of the fund balance motion?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstentions. Oh, housekeeping thing? Okay. And then, uh, other transfers of funds. Move to transfer a hundred and thirty dollars from zero eight, one, one Social Security to zero eight, two, one Unemployment.
Second.
Okay, thanks, Pete. Well, this is the one that the short call is done due to the unexpected claim and social security is tracking favorably. So we can make that transfer. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Abstentions, okay. Six, oh. Oh, yes. Okay. This is the rationale for this one is that there's, it's, it has to do with the Village Hill Drainage Phase. We're trying to move it into to a an account that would allow it to have extended work rather than to sunset with this fiscal year. So it's in capital expenditures now, we want to move it to capital projects, so we can continue replacing the catch basins. The most, I saw a move to transfer to sixty thousand dollars, up to sixty thousand dollars from zero, I'm sorry, it doesn't need enough to, does it?
No.
Transfer sixty thousand dollars from zero nine, three, zero Capital Expenditures with Project Village Hill Drainage Phase two, to zero five, zero, three Capital Projects. Village Hill Drainage Phase two.
Second.
Any question about that change or what it's about? This is to install sixteen catch basins and pipe to improve drainage from Village Hill Park to Pinecrest Road. And the funds in capital expenditures would close on six thirty in the fiscal year end, so the funds in capital projects would carry forward until the project's completed. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions. Okay. I did want to call to your attention or see if there was any other questions about early voting. Suzanne or Christine online? Okay. Thank you, you don't need to present anything unless you, unless you have like further updates. But I just wanted to point out that everyone has it in their information packet. The, that's the part Suzanne did the chart on the last vote, that's separate from this. This is on kind of the status for early voting and figures that they've given us on projecting what there would be if the most likely scenario, early voting goes into, goes into law. And it would, the first election, it would affect, they did delay the impact date. So the first election it would affect would be April thirtieth, twenty twenty four, the presidential preference primary. So they've costed out the hours that it would be because, you know, there's a certain number of days depending on the election for early voting. And it in the, on those days, they would need to be open for that process from ten A M to six P M. And then during the elections, of course, they're open, they need to staff it from, for twelve hour days. So that's what this chart sort of lays out for you. Christine, you, is there something you would, context you want to add to that?
No, Suzanne ran those numbers just the other day, so that is pretty much what we have at the moment. That bill still has not been passed. And I, I, you know, we are anticipating that the first time early voting will happen will be at the April Presidential Preference Primary. But if things don't get going, then probably won't be until the Presidential twenty twenty four election, which would then put that into the next fiscal year. Which would benefit us, obviously, because then we would have a a better idea of what the cost is going to be. Secretary of State is still hoping that the state will pick up some of this expense. But of course, at this point, we just, we don't know.
So this is the full amount, but the state has, is is saying that they are planning to assume at least part, a share of this cost.
They're not, they're not giving us any dollar amounts at this point. On what, on what the towns may receive as a contribution from the state, we just don't know.
And our situation, folks, just to remind you, is that we have fifteen thousand in contingency for this. We thought it was like more pressing for this, for this next budget for twenty twenty four. And so the, so the impact of this is I think more like seventeen thousand. Right, yeah. It's running around seventeen thousand, and it, what it includes is those, the the additional hours. So a reflection of the, what the registrar's stipend is. But also the deputies who come in, you know, for this process and need training on this. And the cost of the ballots and the coding and everything for that, so that's all in the registrar's budget. I don't know if it makes sense, no, it doesn't make sense to at this point, I think we should just hold fast with what we've already got budgeted. The fifteen thousand, I think it's close enough, and especially if the state's going to have a share of what we should probably be able to come up smelling nicely on that. But even, you know, even if all this goes forth. But if it does, if it misses the first election, we have twelve thousand for the presidential. I mean, we have fifteen, but twelve thousand is the estimate. Yes, Pete?
I, is this going to apply, is this early voting going to apply to like referendums and municipal elections as well?
Municipal, yeah, right.
Oh, no, not you, you, you mean that the municipal election, Peter, or the possible pri- municipal primary? That it will not affect either one of those events?
All right, so it it's just state and and national that that it affects?
Early voting really will not take place until after January one, twenty twenty four.
But then
He means going forward.
Twenty twenty four, will it affect municipal and referendums? Or do we not know that yet?
No, I think she said no, definitely no on referendums.
And this early voting, early voting will not take place for referendum.
All right, thank you, and and I think that that the idea that the state is going to come through and promise money to help us with the stuff that they cost us is.
We're keeping our fingers crossed, yep.
Yes, yeah, I, and I I have that much faith. I didn't use, we already have.
Just wanted to call that to your attention. Let's see, was there any, any, any? Let's see, was there any, any, any other questions about this or any of the other documents you guys have had? We haven't discussed yet.
Just aside, the little referendum sheet.
Oh, it isn't, oh, sorry. Actually, I did see it on the school one. Would you like to see the school referendum? Yeah, let me see if I can get that. Do you think we could get that, Christine?
I didn't hear what you said.
Suzanne's data on the school referendum, do you think?
Oh, she didn't send that?
I think what we got was the budget vote.
The budget vote.
Budget referendum, I mean, yeah.
So what you're looking for are the statistics from the referendum, budget referendum? Oh, the school referendum. Okay, I'll, I'll make a note and see if she's got that. And if she has it, I'll have her send it out to you, folks.
Thank you, and also the town clerk correction on that. On that, I usually don't list them, but there were so many documents this time, I wanted, I just listed it for you guys to. Difference, okay. Anything else before?
So the, the joint meeting for the School Building Committee and the Board of. Okay, if, if you hear officially when that's gonna be.
May, it, it's May twenty-fourth.
Is, is that for sure?
May twenty-fourth at six thirty. In person. So, does that mean here?
I have no idea. Yes.
Yes.
I would just, I would encourage, I mean, I know our board is not one of the boards. Involved in the joint meeting, and I know we have a representative who is representing us there, but I just think we should all try to go. Because.
Board of Selectmen are gonna be there too.
Board of Selectmen and SPC.
All right, correct, thank you.
I take notes when they, when they talk. Okay, President to speak? When you went in the room? No? That was from the board? Move to adjourn? All in favor? What's that?
Never mind, you did it again.
Who is it?
It's Rob.
Rob, you wanna talk to us?
Oh, you already adjourned. Forget it, I'll get it next time.
I can't see hands up, so I'm, I'm depending on the kindness of strangers. I'm sorry, Rob. Hasn't, it's not all it's cracked up to be. What did you say? And thank you, too.